Good evening. I'd like to call our November twelfth meeting to order. If you guys will please rise and join us in a prayer and the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Lewis.
Here.
Chairman Protem Kennedy.
Here.
Councilwoman Oplinger.
Here.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Here.
Councilman Blades.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Having no public comment, we will move into council forum. Mr. Protem.
I did not have much going on outside of the budget session. Had no other meetings or events.
I was also at the budget session and attended the Halloween Spooktacular downtown here, so another great event.
Awesome.
So Spooktacular was amazing. We had one thousand one hundred and eighty kids, so imagine that with all their parents with them. So it was a really good event. Thanks to the city and police and fire for helping me out on all that as well. And I did go into the veterans, sit down at the event that Kim had down at the Armory, which was really, really good for the time I stayed. Council speaker talked to me about twenty-three dollars and ten cents when I was down there.
And pork rinds?
Yeah, no pork rinds. That's the only thing.
Okay, I too helped with the Halloween stuff and then went to the budget thing. Today I had a Solid Waste, the annual council meeting, and also too, our district meeting was today. And just really interesting what's going on with the whole state of Missouri about the different grants that are out there and things that are happening. And one of the biggest things that's out there is, if I can find the word again, it's about burning, basically it has to do with pallets. And they're burning pallets to a certain level that they can be used for even filters and water. Also too, there's another robot that they've developed that will cut up pallets in a certain way so they can save and reassemble them for future use. There's two ladies that spoke today. One was from Jeff City, now I don't remember where the other one was from. But anyway, there's a bill that's going into Congress and we're hoping to pass it. It has to do with leftover paint. You know, everybody can say they have leftover paint in their house. And so there's a bill on that sort of thing. And I did not know it, but they can actually recycle paint and reuse it. I had no idea that that was even a thing. So it was just very, very interesting. And we still had about six thousand unclaimed dollars on grants. We had grant applications and we gave away money, but we still had about six thousand dollars left. So anyway, so maybe next year.
Okay. Yeah, so happy belated Veterans Day to anybody that's serving or has served. Budget meeting, we had P and Z meeting the other night as well. And so a couple of things I wanted to throw out there and just maybe get councils thought on. You know, we've got a lot of projects or a lot of things on a list for staff to be working on. And maybe it might not be as clear as we think it might be or could be for them to know what to focus on. And even maybe for ourselves as we start, you know, have all these ideas that have made it onto some list, right? So I'd like to kind of propose we get that list together and just have kind of, you know, what we call it a project pathway or something. And we can collectively, you know, every six months or so, kind of reevaluate the list and kind of give a priority to it, make sure that it's still something we want to do. There's been some things I think that we've showed interest in maybe even two or three years ago, maybe even when you and I first joined, right? That maybe, maybe still on the list, but maybe it's not what we want to focus on anymore or just has fallen down or off the radar, right? And so, you know, I just wanted to get your guys' thoughts on maybe putting something together that we could present to staff and review as a group, you know, twice a year at least. And to give them some clearer direction.
I would think that would be applicable with doing the budget because where we're spending our money this next year, I would think we'd be determined about priorities, but...
Yeah, that's a good point. These would be, we can certainly evolve to from what I'm thinking about, but it'd be things that are project-based, stuff that has a definitive start and end, right? So, you know, any project that would have some type of temporary end to it, whether it be when it's finished or a timeframe, you know, we wouldn't want to put stuff that we just do annually on there, right? Because that's not really a project. That's something we do always or annually.
Would that columbarium, would that be an example?
Yeah, that's a great idea. Great example. Yep, yep. Any thoughts or objections to maybe trying that out?
I haven't, are you talking about like a special session twice a year?
We could, or we could tack it on at the end of a, you know, a budget. But yeah, probably a special session or if we had a short council meeting fitted in. But, you know, something close to every six months, yeah.
Would you involve department heads too with that?
Well, I think this would just be for us to give to leadership and that way they know what our priorities are. And that way we're agreeing, right? So what might be my priority might not be your priority, but we can't tell them the same, you know, two different things. So that's kind of where that comes from.
Okay.
Thoughts from staff? Objections? One question I had, John or Carrie, it's been, I think, maybe two years ago, we put out, I think it's like a request for a proposal for folks to cut maybe the airport in Baldwin for hay. Is that twenty twenty-three maybe?
Yeah, and we never got any, we didn't get anything back on that. The biggest issue was is we're trying to figure out how do we, what metric do we use to come to a decision of who we awarded to?
Okay.
And actually learning from my in-laws, probably the best thing that we could do is to just hire somebody, take bids to bail it, cut and bail it, and then we sell. Sell the hay ourselves. Is to do it that way is probably the best. That way we're just, we're paying for a service. And whatever the bail turns into, because turns into what, if it's four by four bail or five by five bail, or if somebody wants to do other bales and stuff like that, how do we determine, how do we pay and that sort of thing? So looking at it, probably the best thing that we could do is just pay somebody to cut and bail, cut, rake and bail it for us, and then we keep the bales and then pay them for that service to do that.
Gotcha. I mean, I know I had brought at least one proposal, but, you know, I don't know if it was favorable or not, but...
Well, and I agree with that. The issue again back is how do we put that out to the community so that there's equal opportunity and not just, okay, this person asked and this person knew about it? How do we advertise it and everything to come up?
And the reason I'm asking is I've been approached by a couple of different people and, you know, I don't really know what to tell them. And there's one individual, I think, that might even be a, as opposed to maybe paying, maybe more of a revenue stream for us. They asked if they could come and present to us. But I just wanted to get, I guess, kind of gauge interest or in hearing even someone propose, you know, was planting alfalfa in that location, you know, to the tune of netting us, you know, tens of thousands of dollars, you know, and seemed like little risk in my initial conversation, but something I would be interested in hearing and could be a source of revenue for some projects like, you know, the dog pound or whatever it may be, whatever we want to earmark it for, right? Or parks or whatever it is, since that ground. But I just didn't know if there would, if there'd be objection maybe putting that on a future agenda, probably not the next one, but maybe the other one in December if it's not packed. You know, could work with Kami and figure out a good time to see if they would like to come present and then we could make a decision. Wouldn't have to do it that evening, but maybe make it a discussion item and, yeah, okay.
Would you be looking at like a, obviously if somebody's going to be planting something and harvesting something, they plan on probably like a long-term lease type situation?
Yeah, they mentioned like a three to five year, a five year, I think, is what they initially, you know, I said the only thing I could think of for myself is we would probably want some kind of out clause, you know, if we wanted to do something with, whether it be Baldwin or whatever, so, yeah. But I can maybe work with whomever and get the acreage totals and kind of the round numbers that they could, that way they can provide us a, you know, accurate estimate. We could look at that or we could look at John's suggestion of hiring somebody. Because I guess our guys are cutting at that now or is that who's doing it?
Yeah, just got it. Probably the only thing is that we're pretty well limited on what we can do out at the airport property. So we just have to keep that in mind, have a discussion with Justin about what we can and cannot do out there.
Yeah, I imagine it has to be pretty low to the ground. Can't be growing bamboo or something. Okay. I think that is all I have. Let me look here. Yeah, it is. So moving on to the consent agenda, this will be the regular session minutes from October twenty-second, the budget session minutes from the twenty-eighth, and the October and November appropriations.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda for regular session minutes on October twenty-second, budget session minutes October twenty-eighth, and October-November twenty twenty-four appropriation.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Having no old business, we'll move into new business, eight dot one, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two thousand one CF grant. Anybody want to explain what this one is?
Yep.
Yes, sir.
The, we mentioned applying for a USDA grant for body cams a while back. Before I can apply for that, I have to have council approval to even submit the application. And so that's what's in front of you now. Once I get that approval, then I can go through the paperwork part of it. But to apply for a federal grant directly and not through a state coffer, I have to have council approval so that they know that I'm not getting money directly and not with the approval of the governing body.
Gotcha. Thank you, Wes. So as part of that, we need to enter into a public hearing to allow public comment for that item. So I will make a motion that we move into a public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Chairman Protem Kennedy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oplinger.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman Blades.
Yes.
You're in public hearing.
Thank you. Would anyone from the public like to speak about body cams and federal dollars that we may receive? Okay.
Thumbs up, I see.
All right, going once, twice, all right. I will make a motion. We come out of public hearing.
A second, pal?
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Lewis.
Yes.
Chairman Protem Kennedy.
Yes.
Councilwoman Oplinger.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pettit.
Yes.
Councilman Blades.
Yes.
You're out of public hearing.
Thank you. Appreciate you bearing with us while we check a box for federal money there. Moving on, well, I guess we need to approve that, sorry. So I'll make a motion. We approve a resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two thousand one CF grant.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Sorry. Eight dot two, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two thousand two, purchase and installation of scoreboard for the Aurora Recreation Center.
Good evening, council. All right, as it's laid out before you, the biggest issue that we were having with when it came to scoreboards was the location of where the power input would be on the scoreboard. So Athco, Dactronics and Varsity are three major scoreboard producers in this, in the world, basically. And only one of them told us that they can move the power location either at the factory to save costs or at the site depending on where the power locations were. So I've been able to send pictures to everybody who is involved and try to, you know, get the best quote possible. So that's what you have in front of you and that's the reason why we're recommending going with Athco is because they can move the power location on the scoreboard so it wouldn't either be on top of the item or kind of look jagged coming out from a side. So they can either put it out the back or they can bring it out the bottom, whichever is conducive for the facility, so.
So is this a limitation caused by, I mean, I don't want to point finger at like Arc-Tech, but what, is this not normal? This feels like a problem that's not normal for everyone.
Well, most of the scoreboards that at least that I've dealt with had, power comes out the top. So Dactronics, Varsity, all the power locations just come out of the top. Most people just fabricate or have a custom-made bracket that sits on top of the scoreboard that just covers it, that just covers the conduit that comes out of it. Athco would just give us an option to be able to move it so we wouldn't have to do that if where the power location is for the board. So they're all the same boards, four by eight, four feet by eight feet boards. They all come with, the options that we have is wireless controllers. We want to be able to control it wirelessly without having to rough in more conduit to run a controller to a centralized location. So they're all wirelessly controlled, so they're all the same. The only real difference that we found was the, was the location of the, like where the power came out of. And Athco's been the most easy to work with, I guess, when it comes to figuring out what the possibilities were there.
And then no concern then of if we have to replace this down the road, needing something custom where the power's not coming out of the normal place?
No, I mean, Athco's the, was one of the first companies that created a digital scoreboard. So they've been doing this the longest and if you, if you want, we can, I can get on their website and send you pictures of the scoreboards and I haven't done before, but they've, you know. Dactronics is probably the biggest name, most well-known, but Fair Play, which is, which would be the Athco company is, was actually started before Dactronics, so.
What are your contributing, sorry.
Go ahead.
One of your contributing factors is the walking trail, the railing around it and how we're going to be positioning one of these on a wall and one in relation on the opposite end to where the railing is. So that's where our facility is a little bit specific in terms of how that one scoreboard is going to be positioned and placed within the facility is because we're working with that railing there in that area.
Gotcha.
So that's really the biggest portion. On the wall side, we don't really have that issue as much, but on the side where we have the railing and correlation to where that scoreboard's going to go, that's where that comes into play.
And they've been the most, Athco's been the most forthcoming about wanting to come out to the site, see the facility in person all before they went back and they would custom design the brackets they would mount them on.
Okay. Any other questions, council?
Not for me?
I don't need pictures. I trust your judgment.
Well, I'm just saying I can, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'll make a motion. We approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two thousand two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Eight dot three, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two thousand three, planning and zoning appointment. It's Teresa Pettit. So we have an opening on P and Z code allows us to have two of us on that board. So I would like for Teresa to join us over there and help us out.
You're all good.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two thousand three.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
I abstain.
Motion passed.
Moving on, eight dot four, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two thousand four, purchase and installation of audio and video visual, sorry, equipment in the Aurora Rec Center. Should've just stayed, man.
Yeah.
Getting the steps in.
Yeah.
All right, Ms. Carrie's probably going to jump in on this one too because she's put a lot of legwork in on this specific item. We reached out to actually four different organizations and Southwest Audio. Only two of them came back and actually wanted to give a proposal for this project. I don't think it's because of necessarily this, I think it's, I think probably some of it had to do with the scope of the project. So what we were asking for was just to make this facility maximize what we have in the facility. So Southwest Audio Visual has done this project and projects like this the most often. They're, they're, they're the only ones that came to us and we never heard a comment like, "Well, I have to talk to somebody else about doing that," or "I'm not sure if we can do that." Southwest Audio was like, "Yeah, we can do that," or "Yep, we'll look into that." Like it was just very straightforward. Ms. Carrie can jump in as much as possible, but when they came to the quotes that we needed, which was, or the quotes we asked for, which was to have a PTZ or a Point to Zoom camera in that middle room, the other, especially Southeast Republic, did not offer an option for that. They said in their letter, if you're, I think you have that as well, that they could do that at an increased cost. But they provided that for us in the quote, it, I believe, ease of use for us, because I'm not a techie guy. I want to make it easy for me to use and easy for people who come to reserve the facility to be able to use. I believe it'll be easier to use and it's by a company that's done that type of project before. So I just believe that's why we're making the recommendation for Southwest Audio Visual.
Council, the only thing I would add, you did a great job, by the way. The only thing I would add is just that we've worked with Southwest Audio Visual previously on multiple occasions, so they've taken care of the microphone repairs and upgrades and things that John worked with them on. And Chris Schwartz has been our regular contact, so we're very familiar with them. The after-installation customer service is unprecedented really in terms of some of the other things that we've worked with. So we're just really help with, we're happy with them and the products that they provide and the service they provide. When I reached out to him, it was within a couple of days that we had some initial information back. So I appreciate that from a long-term standpoint. In addition to that, their, when we compare their individual products and we broke down the quote, their stuff is more commercial grade, so we have less concern of, you know, we bought a TV from a small box store. This is actually commercially rated TVs and things that we think will have a lot more longevity, specifically if the items are used, you know, more hours a day or a week or whatever. So we just feel like this is more fitting and because of the relationship we already have with this company, that's our recommendation.
Awesome. Seems logical all the way around.
And this is within the furniture and fixtures budget.
Good.
Make a motion. Let me accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash two thousand four for the purchase and installation of audio and visual equipment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony.
Moving on to eight dot five, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash two thousand five, designated court check signers.
Council, this is just simply to have a backup. So we've discovered recently that we don't have a backup for a signer on a couple of these accounts and this is just taking care of that.
Yep.
Make a motion that we accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash two thousand five for designated court check signers.
Second.
Motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Eight dot six, resolution twenty twenty-four dash two thousand six, ADP use of city property at two two twenty-eight South Madison. Any questions, council?
Council, we do have representatives in the audience tonight that would like to share a little additional information than maybe what was in the agenda packets that were proposed to you. And then as your liaison to the Aurora Downtown Project, we have addressed any legal or liability concerns that we have with any of these, so I'm happy to speak to those after the ladies are done with their presentations on these next two items.
Fantastic.
Good evening.
Evening.
So we attended the Missouri Main Street Conference this summer and one thing really spoke to me was a pop-up park. And in my travels, I've been noticing other towns and downtowns and these pop-up parks are a temporary semi-permanent park and we, with the thought that on, okay. Bear with me here because I don't talk to people.
You're fine.
Literally, don't talk to people.
You're good.
So we were thinking to take a vacant lot that the city owned and place a pop-up park with sailshades and seating and then if the city were to ever choose to sell the property or something else would come along, it would be fairly easy to pack everything up and move to a different lot. I say semi-permanent because I, we do love the look of the sun sail shades and they would need steel footings. But the person that I spoke with said it would be relatively easy to dig up as far as planters or anything like that. We were thinking above ground, that would be easy to also move. The lot, we were looking at a sealed Radio Shack lot. Help me out, Carrie.
So placemaking is really the main thing. So Aurora Downtown Project, as they work to revitalize the downtown area, placemaking is one of their biggest things. And so there's a grant available right now through the placemaking part of Missouri Main Street. And so their goal, as you saw in that paperwork, would be sponsorships, whether that be locally or applying for this placemaking grant to take care of this. So there's no request from the city for any financial contribution. And really, it's kind of a big thing. We've seen other communities doing it when we go to these conferences and it's just really great. In terms of the footings, the concrete footings, we've looked into that. We would meet the code on the frost depth and all that, but they would be relatively easy to remove or, you know, maybe would be there if the city had some other intent moving forward that they could be utilized for. So that's why she presents it as semi-permanent, but yet they can remove it at any time that the council wish.
Gotcha. Okay. I know we've talked about doing something there for a long time, right? And other ideas have been floated, but nothing, nothing, you know, risen to the top. So that sounds pretty awesome, so.
I agree.
We have looked into any kind of written agreement or anything that would need to happen between Aurora Downtown Project and the city just based on long-term use, maintenance, upkeep, that kind of thing. And I consulted with Nate about that. Kami is the one that brought to my attention. I needed to halt, so I want to kudos to her for that. And Nate recommended that maybe we look into a memorandum of understanding just so we have something in writing that protects both sides, you know, so that they have something that says we've allowed them use of the property and we have something that says that they're going to maintain what they put there. So we would seek to move forward with something like that with ADP, should you approve it.
Okay, fantastic.
Good job. Thank you.
With that said, I will make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty, or two thousand six, ADP use of city property at two twenty-eight South Madison.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Eight dot seven, special event application Aurora Downtown Project Farmers Market.
Hi.
Good evening.
I am Lisa Boyer. I am also with the Aurora Downtown Project Group. And so one of the things that we also looked at and talked to Kansas City about when we went up to the big Main Street Conference was more stuff involving farmers markets. One of the things that really appeals to us is location. And so we want to be able to bring people in within like a seventy-mile radius that could bring in their products. Everything basically would have simple rules and regulations. We would have a committee that we would pull together so that we can oversee everything. We are hoping to do this potentially starting in May, going through September, and we would look at potentially doing it like maybe the first and third Friday of every month, having different vendors come in, having a big signup deal through our new event deal that we're doing on the computers and everything and our big, what do you want to call it? Website, thank you. And so we're looking at all of that as well, too. I did meet with several different people at different events that I have been to and I've been picking up business cards so that I could pull them in potentially as vendors for all of this. It would basically have to be either homemade or handmade. That would be the big two things. The area that we are hoping to do this at, it would be down by the Aurora Chamber of Commerce and in between that area and Edward Jones. I have spoken also with Shannon Walker. She said that they would be able to give us access to the bathrooms, which we felt was a big plus because we'd looked at potential other spots, but there's no bathrooms. And so not only would we have the potential for bathrooms, but then we could potentially also maybe even have the museum open so that could also bring in public awareness to what we have for the Aurora Museum down there. And Shannon said that they would have someone that would be able to help us to have a station there to oversee so we'd have people not just coming and going, but someone that could be at the chamber to see this area as well. We are also looking to have producers, growers, locals that create and make all of their products. We hoping to strengthen relationships between... We hoping to strengthen relationships between local consumers and producers. We are also hoping that because of this location, that it would be a great visual for people that are coming through from Kansas City that are going to the lake. Um, we're looking at, when I talked to different vendors, they said, we want more than two hours. And I'm like, oh, okay, we don't want to just set up and have to tear down. Okay, that's, that's a great thought. Didn't really think about that. So we would look at potentially either doing it from like five to eight or maybe five to nine. We also want to have live entertainment, that we can have people that would come in, that would potentially, um, just play for donations or just because they wanted to be there. Uh, we've looked at some potential spots there for electricity. There's also a gazebo there that we could potentially use with the chamber, um, and then we could possibly put them in there. Uh, they would be responsible for setting up and tearing down their own stuff, so there would be no cost involved for the vendor space. Um, people could potentially, um, pull in their parks or their, uh, their trucks so that they could park in those locations. So if they wanted to unload or they didn't want to unload, they want to set up a tent, they don't want to set up a tent. We have a lot of different options down there with a lot of space. Parking is really good with it being after hours and stuff down there. You'd have the whole area in front of the post office, you'd have the whole chamber area, you'd have everything in front of Edward Jones, um, several different spots down there. We're also going to encourage the downtown businesses on those nights to stay open later, to potentially help to enhance their businesses regardless of what they have down there. Um, we are also wanting to get, as far as cost goes, I'm looking at doing some big double-sided feather banners that would go up. It would say like Farmers Market, so it would be a great visual to go along with that. Um, they're looking at to be about, from what I've seen so far, forty dollars apiece. Uh, we'd like to get at least three of them so that we would have them from down there. Uh, we are not asking the, uh, city or the chamber or anybody for any money for this. We're looking at potentially getting other sponsors to help us with this. Um, eventually then we would like to go bigger, get T-shirts, get gift bags. Uh, I've been doing a whole bunch of different stuff as far as trying to do stuff for promotions on how to pull people down there. I'm looking at having not only stuff for adults, but I also want to figure out how can I pull in the youth of our future generation? Whether it be little children, whether it be high school kids. I'm hoping to include FFA, FHA, all of those different groups as well, too, and possibly get some of them to come down and let it be maybe their project for the year. And they could run our children's program. So maybe one week we plant seeds and teach them how to start a garden, how to grow a garden. Maybe we have a petting zoo down there one week for the children and just different projects every single week. Um, we are hoping to have, like I said, fresh produce, meats, breads, baked goods, artisans, prepared food, live music, entertainment. Um, our long-term goals would be to include like healthy education, potentially cooking demos, provide education and projects for the adults, young children, youth, and enhance their knowledge of where food comes from, where food comes from, to make healthy choices and the importance of fresh produce. Um, and then on my long-term goals, uh, we want to be able to promote the farmer's market, um, and just continue to grow and grow from there. We don't want to be in competition with the other farmer's market that is already currently in town. We have, uh, briefly spoken with some of them. We have invited them to be a part of this. That is one of the reasons that we were looking at potentially doing it on Friday nights and just doing it two, twice a month to start with. So then that way then we would not be interfering with their Saturdays or their Wednesdays. But if they wanted to, they could also join us in addition to what they currently have.
Gotcha.
All right.
So Lisa, I think that's fantastic. I got a couple of questions. Does anybody have any? First, I'll go last.
No, I think it's thrilling. Go ahead.
Yeah. I would just say some of that sounded a little open-ended. Um, so I guess I would just say maybe as you firm up your plans and, and things that are, you know, coming together, um, just cover that with the liaison, Carrie, and, and, um, that way if anything that you think goes outside of the lines of that might be a further discussion, you can let us know. But I think for me, as long as the staff's okay with it, I'm okay with it, so.
Absolutely. Um, and we presented, I had them apply as a special event application on this one that would just be recurring, and we've done that on a thing or two in the past. Um, for me, this wasn't like a ongoing uninterrupted use of, you know, the, the lot. So for that purpose, we went with special event, but I think that gives us the ability to have those conversations as they're, as it grows or transforms or whatever it might do, then we can absolutely
Yeah.
revisit that each time when they're planning for it or something. So I'm happy to help with that.
Awesome. Well, thank you for taking, taking the time to come and speak and to do all that. That's fantastic.
I'll make a motion that we accept the special event application for the Downtown Project Farmers Market.
Second.
Motion a second. Please vote.
Motion passed.
Next up, staff reports.
Uh, Council, we have my staff or city managers report in part view. Um, hit on a few things. Uh, the finishing of the, uh, HVAC replacement project at the Police and Fire Facility. Um, that has been something that we went, when we initially, uh, approved that, um, that that wasn't supposed to possibly get done until, they get the parts until probably maybe April of twenty twenty-five is what that was stated as. But, uh, they've been working along, getting it done as the pieces and parts have come in. Um, they've finished up putting the big pieces, uh, in place a couple of weeks ago. So that is all scheduled to be completed within the next week. So that's well ahead of schedule and before it gets cold in that building. So that is, uh, uh, great news. Uh, twelve warning letters have gone out for violation of truck routes, and that's essentially people, uh, drivers driving into residential neighborhoods and parking their truck. Along with that, uh, there's been three citations issued for that as well. Um, so, um, uh, we're, that, the police staff are working on that. Uh, the PD has received special enfor- enforcement grant funding for DB, DWI, uh, um, enforcement throughout the holidays. So they'll be working on that. Um, Shop With A Hero is scheduled for, uh, with Walmart is set for December seventh, and that is both the police and the fire staff that, uh, work that. Um, just a reminder that Side-by-Side Christmas Parade is set for the fourteenth, and I had the twenty-first on there, but the Aurora Chamber, uh, Christmas Parade is also the fourteenth, I've been told. So a correction on that. Annual hose testing in the fire department has been, is being completed. AEDs for the Recreation Center has been purchased. That comes out of the furniture and fixtures, uh, budget. Uh, leaf pickup has begun with the street department and City Hall Christmas trees, the Christmas trees that are decorated, decorated, uh, by businesses and then, uh, placed out around City Hall during, uh, Christmas season. Those are being delivered this week, uh, to those who have purchased them, uh, for decorating and placement around City Hall. So last year we got about nine hundred dollars out of that, and so we use that money to turn around and buy for the next thing, uh, repair lights for the Christmas decorations that go on the, uh, that go on the, uh, poles, the light poles in the downtown area. So we've sold out all of those if I, if I heard right.
I haven't heard that. That's exciting.
Um, also, many flags were replaced and rehung, uh, for Veterans Day. And, and I think Carrie is that correct, that some of that dollars that we use for the Christmas, uh, trees were also used for, to purchase those also, so. Um, and that's from last year's money, not this year's money. That's from last year's money. Um, cemetery, they're mulching leaves for fall cleanup. Uh, they're also assisting street, uh, with the leaf, uh, the street with a leaf collection. Um, and so the work helping with that. Also cemetery records, Brad brought it to my attention a couple of weeks ago, and I had no idea that this was the case. The cemetery records were just on a computer in his office, um, all the database for all of that. And so we, uh, reached out to Asus, uh, we had them, uh, get connected to the server downstairs so that it's connected downstairs. And then that server also has a nightly backup and stuff, so now all of that is safe. I shudder to think what could have happened during that time. So we're happy to get that done, so. Um, it also makes a little paperwork easier for Pam, uh, downstairs, doing some of that work downstairs as well, uh, as far as the writing out the deeds and different things. Uh, vandals have been busy, uh, in the park. Uh, they've stolen another disc golf goal. Um, and so we're looking at options on how to secure them. They're just using a sawzall and cutting them right off, so. Uh, they've been talking about some different ways that they can secure and make them so that they can't move as quite as easy.
John, at one point, we, um, when, when we first started talking about getting internet, one of the reasons we wanted to do in the park was to have wifi and have security cameras and, and some of that. Have we, have we looked into, into that now that we have all that set up?
We have some of the infrastructures, my understanding, that we could, uh, where we shoot wifi over to the pool and that kind of thing. So, uh, that might be something that we can look at to, uh, get those hooked up.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, even if we're covering the entrance and exits.
Right.
Probably, probably silly to have a security camera by every disc golf basket, but, you know, maybe just overall in the park would be wise.
Okay. Uh, fall cleanup, that's ongoing. Uh, mulching and tree trimming is needed, and they've reseeded Legion Field. And they're securing, they're also having to secure the picnic tables on the, to the concrete pads at the picnic shelters. And that's again, response to vandalism, people removing them, uh, moving them, uh, stacking them four or five high, um, and that kind of thing. So Travis was kind of concerned, as was I, about when they're stacking in three or four high people, if they're climbing on them and they fall off, liability issues and things like that. So, um, they're moving towards securing them, uh, to the concrete pads. Um, uh, the Recreation Center, uh, furniture proposal, Carrie and Anthony, uh, worked with, uh, the dealer of working out the, uh, final purchase and, uh, setting the date for, uh, getting that, getting that done. Uh, the order, uh, the final order will be coming before Council at next Council meeting. Okay. Um, Rec Center Property, uh, Property Corner Park Area, uh, we're awaiting a demo permit from D, DNR for the large red brick building. Anthony has also been working on getting registered with Renew Active. Renew Active is the same thing as, uh, it's similar to Silver Sneakers. It's not the exact same, uh, company, but Renew Active is actually, has a wider, uh, bigger footprint, but they're not as well-known as, uh, uh, Silver Sneakers. So he's working with that, uh, to, uh, get that, uh, set up, that seniors in our community can take advantage of that. Spooktacular, uh, those guys had a booth out there, and they had a hundred and fifty registrations on Day Smart. That's not memberships, but that's just people going in, starting, getting a, a profile set up on Day Smart. And so just, uh, a few hours of work, uh, they were able to get that, and they're continuing to work on that right now. Anthony, do you have a, an idea, a rough number of how many, um, accounts we have set up so far?
Hundred and seventy-something, maybe a hundred and seventy-two or something like that.
Okay. All the fitness, uh, equipment has been ordered. Um, there are also, we're working with Sign Designs, uh, setting up to, getting set up to operate the programming of the sign. Anthony and Jeremy are getting, uh, uh, going through the, uh, process of getting, receiving the training on how to do that so that they can, uh, jump right in and get that done. And I believe that, uh, we were told sometime in, in, by the end of November, that, that we would have that, so. Um, wastewater winterization is underway, uh, lift station cleaning, they, they're working on one of the final ones, uh, to get that, uh, lift station, uh, taken care of before winter comes. And I've already talked to you about the airport. I just left that as a reminder. Um, planning and zoning, um, they are going to take up the issue that's coming to them to talk about the issue of side yard setbacks uh, due to, due to repeated requests from developers coming in, uh, the request to reduce the side yard setbacks that are put there, so. Um, and so, uh, due to that, uh, it's been recommended that, uh, that come and that planning and zoning, uh, kind of sort that out. Uh, City Hall Outdoor Electrical System, uh, repairs in preparation for the community Christmas and tree lighting, uh, that was done last week, so. Um, just, uh, missed the work session that is scheduled for Thursday on the fourteenth, as far as upcoming meetings, um, and events attending, so that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Council?
No, sir.
Not for me.
Okay. With that, I'll thank the audience. I'm going to make a motion. We move into closed session pursuant to RSMO six-ten dot zero-two-one for one, three, and thirteen.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Chairman Prof. Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilwoman Oflinger?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilman Blades?
Yes.
You are in closed session.
Thank you very much. Take a, uh, five minutes.
Yes.